Please speak into the microphones. If you need Spanish translation, a gentleman back here.
Okay, a call meeting to order. And the first order of business is the approval of the minutes from April 28th. And I'll entertain a motion to waive the reading and approve if there are no additions or corrections.
I will make the motion to waive the reading and approve.
Second.
Second, thank you. In favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The first order of business this evening is case 2023-02 at 80 Park Street. You need to give us your name and address.
Okay, my name is Chase Failla. I'm at 80 Park Street. I'm seeking relief for lack of parking spaces and open space. I'm seeking to convert my single-family home into a two-family home. Unit one will be the first floor, which is approximately 800 square feet with access to the basement for storage use only. Unit two will be entrance on the first floor with the second and third floor, and that comes out to three-bedroom, one-bath with a bonus room.
How big? How big?
Around 1,600 square feet. That's for unit two. And usable open space is 120 square feet and no off-street parking.
Questions?
So this case did come to you two years ago.
Yes.
However, the permit expired, so he's coming back to be refreshed.
And as I remember, the original proposal was for three apartments, and this year...
Two apartments.
It was always two.
Yes.
Okay.
I misremembered. And are you going to rent them?
I'm going to live in one and rent the other.
Okay.
And the only work I'm planning to do is removing one door and putting a wall there. And Halil with the building department has walked it with me and kind of confirmed that that's really all that needs to be done.
Okay.
What about the egress on the third floor if there's, God forbid, something happens like a fire or something?
So there are windows, but there's a second staircase from the...
Are you going to put special windows in?
No. There's a staircase for the second unit on the second floor that goes to the back.
John, can you advance to the first floor plan? Would that be the best one? Walk us through the egress?
Yes. So on the right side, that staircase goes up to the second unit.
Okay, so both tenants will enter off of Park Street and one goes straight up the stairs?
Yes, so...
You're going to take the mic or take the other one with you?
So this door will be the one that's being sealed. And then one unit entrance here for the second, and then off this, which is an existing door off the street. And that's going to be the first floor. And this is the only common space.
That's a hallway inside?
Yes, it is.
So there's a third floor and the stairs stacked on top of the others?
Yes, so stairs here go all the way to the top. This staircase only stops here, though.
Okay, so there's, what is the second means out of the third floor?
There's not a second means other than the windows for the third floor. But my understanding is that the second means just needs to be for the unit itself.
So you would live in one of the units and the other would be a rental?
Yes.
Okay.
And which floor, which unit are you going to live in?
I've gone back and forth. I'm not sure yet. I've gotten a little used to the space, so probably upstairs.
Have a yard at the top of the page there?
Yes, just a little courtyard.
Landlocked, so to speak?
So...
Is there, how does one go out there?
There's a door in the gate right here, and it goes around, and it's a courtyard with one little alley that's gated, but it's kind of a maze to get back.
And is that where the trash is going to be?
No, trash is on the street in that area.
Well, you have to, where are the bins going to be stored?
There's not, no one in that neighborhood has bins for the most part. It's...
They don't have the big blue bins?
No. A lot of them are, just on Mondays, they put out the bags.
No, because there's, I'm familiar with that area.
Yes.
There's nowhere to store the city-issued barrels.
Yeah, the alley itself, I don't think is even wide enough to fit one of them.
Yeah, I can't say this is a particularly concerning project, so I will motion to approve it with the standard conditions.
And the additional conditions? John, has this been shared with the petitioners?
It has not been shared with the...
Okay.
So the standard conditions and then above that, no rental sublease or lease of less than 12 months. Because you're getting parking relief, the unit that you're not, well, neither unit will be able to get resident sticker parking.
Neither unit or one of the units, correct?
The new, I'm sorry, the new unit will not be able to. And then prior to me signing off on our occupancy permit, I'd be looking for an as-built plan.
Okay.
I will second the motion to approve.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
You're in. Service speaker.
So I'll see you May 9th here for the CBA.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next up is case 2023-03 at 305 Eastern Avenue. Petitioner not present.
No, that's, you see...
We have a letter here, which you can all read.
Make a motion to allow them to withdraw without prejudice?
I will second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now, the proposed zoning amendment, public hearing. Are there any members of the public present who would like to speak on this matter?
No. I have to tell you what it is.
John is going to tell us what it is.
So in 2016, the city adopted the Community Improvement Trust Fund zoning, which set up a requirement that any use or structure that received relief for open space, the number of units, the floor area ratio of building height and maximum building coverage had to make a payment into the fee based on the amount of relief that was submitted, but no more than 3% of the total construction cost. And that went into a fund that to be used by the city manager with council approval on infrastructure, traffic, crime prevention, school buildings, et cetera. Which worked fine, however, it was, the council wanted something a little bit more all-encompassing, and they, in February, they adopted a new linkage fee ordinance, not part of the zoning, it's a separate city ordinance that the zoning board, Planning Board and Zoning Board does not administer. But basically, what it says is that any new or additional industrial or commercial development that exceeds 25,000 gross square feet must pay into the linkage fee, no matter, not just based on relief, it's for a payment period. And the same for residential development that exceeds 25,000 gross square feet and has 24 or more new residential units, and any new or additional mixed-use development with the same limitations. It does not apply to any project where at least 25% of the dwelling units are deeded for restricted affordable housing units with incomes up to 80% of AMI. It's paid into a community impact linkage fees used for similar purposes that the Community Improvement Fund, Community Improvement Trust Fund is used for. And the fee is, for commercial industry, it's $12.50 a square foot times the total number of square feet over and above 25,000. And for residential mixed use, it's $10 a square foot, paid in two equal installments, one at the building permit and one at the occupancy permit, and the fee is increased yearly based on inflation. So since that is now here and serves the same purpose of Community Trust Fund payment, the request for the amendment is to delete the Community Improvement Trust Fund payments section of the zoning, and the linkage fee would then supersede it.
Was the 25,000 minimum square footage the lot or the...
I'm sorry.
Was it the building square footage or the area of the lot?
Of the gross square feet of the building or addition.
Okay.
Do you know if all of the councillors voted unanimously or if there was some disagreement?
I don't know.
Is anyone in the audience know? Alex, do you know if it passed unanimously or if there was disagreement?
Okay. Well, it got a majority approved of it for it to come before us. And so we're only being asked to approve the change in the ordinance as it's written.
You're not being asked to approve the linkage. All you're being asked is to delete the Community Improvement Trust Fund.
Okay.
So that there's not a requirement for a double payment.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to delete that part of the zoning code that we were requested to delete.
So, I just, correct, so your motion is to recommend to the council that they adopt the amendment as proposed, no change.
Okay.
I just want to make sure.
John, can you give a little more context to why this came up in the first place? Were they feeling like it was dissuading?
I'm sorry, Sarah, I can't hear very well.
Why was this proposed in the first place? Was it dissuading developers?
It was proposed because the, partly because the Community Improvement Trust Fund did not take into account all types of development. It was only those that received relief, and this one is a little bit, this one is across the board. Alex, are you aware of any other reasons why they adopted linkage as opposed to Community Improvement Trust Fund?
So my understanding was around the linkage fee, the council was looking to offset development impacts more comprehensively. So while the Community Improvement Trust Fund related to open space as well as other uses that the funds could be invested into, it wasn't as broad as the linkage fee is written. So for instance, the linkage can be utilized for transportation, infrastructure, youth development programs, as well as other social services. So my sense was that they were trying to cast a wider net to offset impacts.
I will second the motion made by Sarah. Or, I'm sorry.
Double, that's fine. I've moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
And finally, Planning Board discussion. Alex.
Thanks. Thank you. Alex, would it help if the board gave an idea of what they're seeking?
Absolutely. So good evening, everyone. My name's Alex Train. I serve as the Director of Housing and Community Development for the City of Chelsea. I'm joined by Ibrahim Lopez Hernandez, our Sustainability Manager with the department. So first off, I want to extend our thanks for inviting us for the conversation this evening. We look forward to discussing with the Planning Board some of the focal areas that our department centers on, as well as our major priorities for the upcoming year as guided by City Council. So I distributed a short presentation just now that encapsulates the kind of overview of our department. The mission of the Department of Housing and Community Development is really centered on residents. So it's grounded in a commitment to serving residents while promoting long-term prosperity as well as upward mobility for all that live in the community. So we carry out our mission through six main areas of concentration, including affordable housing and anti-displacement, sustainability and climate adaptation, community development, economic mobility and workforce development, social infrastructure, as well as infrastructure and mobility. Our department's comprised of approximately 17 staff positions. So this includes professional urban designers, urban planners, housing specialists, as well as financial and administrative professionals. So I have a couple of slides that I can walk through that delve into each of those six areas of concentration, covering some of the key objectives of the department, priority initiatives, as well as our approach to community engagement and working with partners on each of those disciplines. But before I delve into it, I wanted to see if members of the board had any particular questions that they wanted to address before we get started, or any specific areas of interest that we could cover.
One thing that I would like to cover is the process that the city went through, I think about a year ago, of changing the zoning code in the four meetings we had, and what's been the result of that, and has it yet been adopted and that sort of thing?
Great. So about a year ago, this department, in conjunction with community-based partners under the leadership of Chelsea City Council, started a community education process concerning land use planning. And so I would rewind right before the pandemic when we were engaged with City Council regarding the completion of a master plan. Ultimately, due to the pandemic as well as conflicting priorities, we weren't able to embark on that master planning process, yet neighborhood zoning changes were still desired for a multitude of reasons. I think first and foremost, as many of you experience on a daily basis, neighborhoods across Chelsea are experiencing rampant displacement pressures. So rising housing and utility costs, coupled with declining housing conditions, have stressed families and priced a lot of folks outside of Chelsea. So centered on the goal of stemming displacement and promoting housing opportunities for residents, we began a community education process that consisted of four workshops centered on zoning. So the first really was tailored to the history of zoning, particularly some of the racist origins of land use policy and planning throughout the country, as well as in Massachusetts. And then we segued into a discussion around residents' vision for their neighborhoods, as well as education on the local process for adopting zoning. So since then, we've continued convening a roundtable of community partners, and we're synthesizing the outcome of those four workshops, a lot of the feedback that we heard, and looking to develop a community-wide anti-displacement strategy out of it. So at this point, we don't have recommendations just yet. Over the course of this spring, summer, and fall, we'll be holding an additional series of community meetings, resource workshops, focus groups, and other neighborhood engagement in order to develop both policy recommendations as well as new pilot projects that could help accomplish some of the goals that we heard in those first four workshops. So I think the earliest that there would likely be anything before you in draft form would be mid to late fall, but we would love to come back and meet with you early summer to begin understanding your objectives and incorporating those into the process.
Thank you, that's helpful. I wasn't quite sure where we were in the process, or frankly, even if the new zoning had been adopted, because I'm new to the board. So that's helpful. It's interesting that there tends to be kind of a big disconnect between the proposals we see and the zoning code as it exists, and people will often come to us looking for relief from a lot of things, and they just say, well, look at all the other houses in the neighborhood, none of them meet the zoning code as it is. So it's a bit, it's kind of an awkward negotiation. Yeah.
Absolutely, and quite honestly, without a master plan as sort of an overarching guide in order to inform those decisions, it is increasingly difficult. So one thing that we do quite frequently is neighborhood planning, so that can center on specific geographic areas. Right now, we're about to endeavor to create a housing plan for the Shertlift Bellingham neighborhood, as well as kind of topic area plans, like our Open Space and Recreation Plan, which we'll be updating this coming fiscal year. So throughout those plans, we're able to produce many of the same recommendations informed by community input that would come across in a master plan. And I think one other key area that may be worth kind of talking through and mulling over is, you know, how do we go from those planning efforts and the recommendations they yield to creating kind of tools that the board would find helpful in, you know, ensuring that the objectives that are outlined in those plans can be kind of front and center as you review proposals?
That's fantastic. I would love to have those in front of us as we make those calls. Are there any existing neighborhood plans that have already been set out?
Yeah, so on the housing and anti-displacement side, a lot of our efforts right now are being guided by an anti-displacement strategy that we've set out. Moreover, we're in the process of working with community partners on that larger anti-displacement plan. Previously, there was a strategic housing plan and a community preservation plan that was completed. The community preservation plan is updated annually by the Community Preservation Committee. So those are the major kind of governing documents pertaining to housing development, rehabilitation, and preservation. On the economic development and workforce development side, we are in the process right now of an economic development plan focused on the West Chelsea area. It's the district surrounding market basket containing a range of underutilized property. We aim to have a published document in draft form by middle of the summer that'll set out kind of economic and workforce development priorities for those areas. So one of our key priorities in that district, as well as some of our other industrial districts, is to preserve and enhance our economic base in order to produce more jobs for residents as well as increase tax revenue for the city. The waterfront similarly is governed by a municipal harbor plan that was recently completed, and there was zoning amendments that were enacted by City Council and voted upon by the board at the time, that attempt to shape the future of the waterfront, balancing the public access needs of the community with the goals of producing high-wage jobs in durable industries along the coast. The climate and sustainability side, I'll turn over to Ibrahim to talk through some of the planning efforts he's working on right now, but both on the coastal adaptation as well as the sustainability side, we have both efforts underway as well as planned efforts.
Hi, my name is Ibrahim Lopez Hernandez. I'm the Sustainability Manager. I'm with the North Suffolk Office of Resiliency and Sustainability, so it's an office within the department that works regionally with the City of Chelsea, City of Revere, and Town of Winthrop. So the major focus of the office is to guarantee the safety of residents by helping in climate adaptations such as sea level rise and extreme heat, and also helping our communities reach net zero or reduce greenhouse gas emissions through different focus areas. Some of those include sea level rise and flooding. It also includes electrification of our built environment, also includes trying to change transportation patterns, so they're more friendly either through EV charging as well as bike and pedestrianizing our built infrastructure. There are some major projects that the office right now is undertaking. On the mitigation side, there is a Zero Carbon Action Plan finalizing for the three municipalities, so this will really be a roadmap for Chelsea on how to reach net zero, and what are the strategies associated with that and how to follow that path. There are also some climate resiliency projects that are being undertaken. So there is the Island and River Project, which is a major flood barrier needed in order to provide resiliency to the western part of Chelsea in the FEMA floodplain. There is also Eastern Avenue along the Mill Creek, as well as the northern part of the Mill Creek, where the office is undertaking different projects with the department and other stakeholders to see how flood can be prevented or sea level rise can be prevented. And then there's all the major projects for extreme heat. There's the Cool Block Project, where we're piloting with community-based partners and other stakeholders on how to reduce the exposure to extreme heat. As GHG, greenhouse gas emissions continue, climate change continues to progress, extreme heat is going to be a worsening public health factor, so we're trying to figure out what are the best ways to retrofit our buildings, retrofit our built environment, so it's more resilient and people can be safer. Those are about the major areas. For the Planning Board, we have been in discussions on how to incorporate planning boards, especially for the climate mitigation side. There are a lot of discussions on how zoning relates to being able to have our houses, our commercial districts, more sustainable. So we are thinking about trying to approach a checklist or some type of tool so that there are probing questions, if there is a development that might come up on review, questions such as resiliency for Hurricane Four Storm Surge, white roofing in order to prevent extreme heat, as well as providing enough space, or are you contemplating electrifying your building, having heat pumps and all these other decarbonizing technologies that are important for those goals?
I think just building off what Ibrahim mentioned, you know, we do have an opportunity right now through the state's Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. There's an annual grant entitled the Land Use Planning Grant that's available to municipalities, where municipalities like Chelsea can obtain up to $50,000 to undertake planning efforts, produce different neighborhood studies, as well as create planning tools that benefit local communities. So if there is a desire for the Planning Board to work with the department on crafting a tool that could be used in development review, we would certainly be happy to, you know, pursue that funding opportunity to bring it to fruition.
I think that would be super valuable. I know a few months ago, a development came in front of us in Maverick Street, and it was a pretty big condo development, and the only reason I knew about the Cool Block Project is just because I'm like plugged in on social media and stuff, and I've seen it in like NPR, but the developer had no idea about it, and so, and I wasn't sure exactly how, as a Planning Board member, you know, I could make sure that that developer was, you know, feeding into the goals of the Cool Block Project. As a Planning Board, can we require him to have a white roof or this or that? And I think in the end, we just kind of, we said, oh, one of the conditions is that you'll have to work with the city on these things, but those are the sorts of questions that we're not quite sure how to, you know, work through. through.
Absolutely, absolutely. So I guess in addition to the climate resilience and sustainability side, do members of the board have other areas of interest that they believe could be, you know, employed in the review process?
Yeah, maybe you can speak to, you know, if we're advocating for home ownership, but we're also advocating for density, how do those two goals come together as far as helping people, like helping homeowners maintain ownership of their homes, especially if they're in a flood zone? Are we providing homeowners the tools that they will need to hold on to their homes or are they going to just fall prey to, you know, to developers who want to turn it into multi-unit housing blocks? I just hate to think of a future for Chelsea that's, you know, street after street full of multi-unit housing and no real pathway for home ownership. So, I mean, I know that those concerns are both very important and they don't always come together, but what is your department's take on how we address that?
Yeah, so I think, you know, across the city, displacement is an acute risk and reality for both low-income, moderate-income homeowners as well as low- and moderate-income tenants, whether it's a family that's, you know, raised their kids in a three-family and can no longer afford the upkeep and is therefore forced to sell it, or, you know, a larger property that, you know, is going to be subjected to an investor coming in and purchasing it because of the market conditions. All of those factors, you know, we see a confluence that relate to displacement. So we're hoping to answer some of those questions as part of both this larger citywide anti-displacement effort as well as neighborhood-centered efforts such as the Neighborhood Hub Program that we're overseeing in conjunction with Mass Housing as well as our community-based partners. And those will produce local policy initiatives including zoning recommendations, programmatic recommendations, projects that the city could implement, as well as state policy that we could advocate for collectively to reduce the probability of displacement affecting both tenants and homeowners. Additionally, regarding homeownership, we're frequently working with both our local partners such as Chelsea Restoration Corporation as well as others on a foreclosure prevention assistance program that disperses emergency funds to help keep people in their homes and avert foreclosure, as well as working with property owners on rehabilitation or repair efforts through a housing rehabilitation program. In a couple of weeks, we'll be publishing a flood toolkit, so it's going to be a toolkit that both homeowners as well as landlords can use to essentially flood-proof their properties to the best of their ability. It won't completely alleviate flood risk in many of these low-lying areas susceptible to flooding, but it is a meaningful step that can empower property owners to safeguard their properties. So I think we see it as a combination of developing, you know, sound policies as well as projects to counter market forces coupled with education outreach and longer-term engagement with the community concerning some of the issues like climate.
That's great.
I got a question. I'm more interested in changing some of the zoning, such as like on the waterfront to be able to live there, and also the produce market, making it sort of like, more like a tourist trap, more like Pike's Peak or the Japanese market. And those require zoning changes. So I, how difficult is it? I know the waterfront is extremely difficult to rezone, but I think it's a kind of a little lost opportunity there. I really love the produce market idea, I think that could really work. It'd be like a little vision, but, you know, but I understand that some of my ideas are a little wild, but is there an easier way? Do you have to go through the state to get it rezoned? Is that with the waterfront?
So interestingly, the state of Massachusetts oversees very few land use functions from a regulatory perspective. One of the few land use functions that they do oversee is related to designated port areas. So Chelsea is encapsulated by a designated port area. It's a district in which only maritime industrial activity is allowed as governed by the state. So there's almost no conceivable method of deviating from that. So if a property falls into disuse, let's say it's been vacant for a decade, there is a process by which the city can petition the state every four years for a boundary review that looks at the boundaries of the district, the suitability of the property for maritime use, and whether or not it should stay in the DPA or be pulled out of the DPA and therefore subject to broader development. They're an extremely, you know, stringent agency and it's a relatively strict process, so there's almost no probability of the DPA being, you know, comprehensively reworked in Chelsea Creek. And a lot of the zoning we have right now mirrors the DPA but attempts to capitalize on many of the benefits that we can actually realize from it. So creating living wage jobs is a large one, developing infrastructure that hardens the coastline to safeguard neighborhoods from flooding is another. So it's a really tough area to work in. Places like the Produce Center, places that kind of leverage or could be leveraged for increasing cultural resources, tourism, and economic development, you know, can be accomplished through a combination of, you know, targeted economic development planning coupled with zoning that could implement some of those recommendations. So as part of the, you know, economic development planning process, we would generally look at issues pertaining to creating new cultural attractions or partnering with businesses to expand public offerings that generate, you know, visitors. So that becomes less of a zoning question at first, but once we have a vision with the community established, then we would look to change zoning in order to implement that vision.
Because don't you think if the produce market was, it would put pressure on Market Basket to lighten up the parking spaces? If they realized people were just driving by to go into the, to the little, you know, little pikes, you know, let's throw the fish around and do all, so, or throw the vegetable around, I guess, because it's not really a fish market, so. It's just something that is stuck in my, you know, now that the strip joint is gone, still miss that stretch. Anyway, but it's just an interest, I think it's an interesting development because there's no residential stuff over there.
Right.
So I think it would be an interesting idea, because I do think people like to, especially artists, definitely like to live in residential areas. So I think it would be an interesting idea to put some, you know, who wouldn't want to live on the, on Eastern Avenue, who wouldn't want to live on the salt pile? Artist resident, I can't imagine not living in the salt pile. Or where the harbor equipment is, who wouldn't want to live there? At least if you had like, you know, if you can live in the Isabel Museum, you can certainly live in Harbor in that way, so it's kind of interesting. And I know that that business is in transition.
Yeah, to say the least. So with the area around Market Basket, we are progressing through an economic development planning process in conjunction with community partners throughout the rest of this calendar year. There'll be a multitude of opportunities with both one-on-one interviews, focus groups, and community meetings that we'll be hosting with residents, property owners, and businesses. So would definitely encourage you to bring ideas like that to those, particularly as we're looking to enhance commercial and light industrial opportunities around the Market Basket area in order to both increase jobs as well as ensure that, you know, larger assets like the produce distribution cluster can remain in Chelsea and grow in Chelsea.
Have you been able to engage any conversations with the Demulla family about their development plans for that plaza which have stalled since Home Goods and, I can't remember, TJ Matt, you know, since those, since they moved the grocery store?
We have been. So developing a unified vision in concert with the community for the Market Basket site is a paramount priority of ours right now in our economic development practice. So over the course of the last two to three months under the leadership of the council president, we've been engaged with the Demullas family regarding site reuse opportunities for the Market Basket location. You know, unfortunately, they're not developers and some of their operational needs related to the grocery store constrains what's possible with portions of the site. Contrarily, there are segments of the site that could be redeveloped into affordable housing, small business centers, places that people will want to live and go with their families. So right now, we're in the process of beginning negotiations around a memorandum of understanding, and our goal is to have that MOU reflect, you know, community goals for development and set out a timeline for advancing the redevelopment of certain portions of their site. I will say that it's been arduous, you know, unlike some developers who will be open to simply selling property and allowing the buyer to essentially, you know, move forward with a project, the Demullas want to retain ownership of that entire site, limiting the types of uses that are viable. So right now, we have a grant through the Mass Housing Partnership that is allowing us to manage planning and pre-development efforts focused on creating affordable and mixed-income housing around that transit station. And so we have identified a section of their site that could be suitable for affordable housing with ground-floor retail. That will come with its own limitations, particularly given the fact that Demullas won't outright sell the property, but we are going to be exploring it to the best of our ability. So I completely agree with you, you know, I look at the MOU from 10 years ago and there were a lot of, you know, promised assurances that haven't come to fruition.
Good. No, I'm glad to hear that conversations are ongoing because it really, I mean, that's, it's, it's kind of Chelsea's equivalent of government-centered plaza over there. It's just a lot of, in my view, wasted space and it would be wonderful to see it fully utilized.
Absolutely, and there are real public health impacts to the space as it's designed right now with the expansive parking lots, the limited tree canopy, the air quality, plus it's right next to a commuter rail station and Silverline Station that, you know, residents deserve access to.
Great, thank you.
So we talked a little bit about kind of economic development, climate adaptation, sustainability, affordable housing. I think the two, two other sections I did want to touch on are kind of community development and preservation. In partnership with the Community Preservation Committee, our department works with community partners to preserve and enhance historic sites as well as to ensure that historic architectural standards are adhered to on projects involving the built environment. In concert with those activities, we manage a suite of public art and place-making programs to activate public space as well as oversee cultural programming and resources for residents to enjoy. And then the last section is really delving into infrastructure and mobility, another section where I think we foresee a lot of opportunity to collaborate with the Planning Board. So the department oversees surface infrastructure planning, including transportation and mobility involving major arteries, intersections, and the bike and pedestrian network. Moreover, we undertake digital infrastructure planning, including efforts right now to establish a municipal broadband utility and plan out a high-speed internet network that residents can afford. So both of those efforts, you know, require the interface between the public realm and private development to be carefully planned, whether that's ensuring that there are, you know, agreements secured with developers to run, you know, internet conduit across their site, or ensuring that the proper public transportation or bike and pedestrian amenities are incorporated into development. So if we do go about creating a tool that we could, we could work with you on for the review process, these are certainly two areas that I would recommend emphasizing.
That would be helpful. With the different tools you've talked about creating for us, are they things that could also be shared with developers so that they have sort of a roadmap as to what the city would like to see in terms of developments? That might help, you know, if they're able to incorporate some of that, it could help speed up the approval process if they're working more collaboratively.
Absolutely. So commonly municipalities will create design guidelines. Frequently, these encompass the built environment, so they're guidelines that will govern the specific architectural styles that are preferred or advise developers on how they should go about building in a flood zone. Additionally, they can touch on sort of operational considerations, so things like incorporating, you know, bike-sharing stations into your development. So I think design guidelines, if tailored properly, could be a way to effectively do that. The drawback to them, which we've seen in a lot of communities, is, you know, municipalities end up producing this like 50-page book that, quite honestly, nobody can digest nor apply to projects. So the challenge is always how do you make those actionable so they're reflected in projects? But I certainly think that something that is, you know, tailored and covers the main priorities of the Planning Board could be possible.
There are some really simple ones, like even around pavement and drainage. So we've had a few people come before us who wanted to turn some of their lawn into parking or something, and they have no idea that there's even such thing as like permeable pavement or pavers or anything. And so, yeah, those are, and, you know, just for the average homeowner, I think it could be really helpful.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I guess, what she was saying, I guess, has there been kind of like a side-by-side comparison of what Chelsea's doing and Everett's doing regarding new construction and I guess why Everett right now is more builder-friendly and more developers are going towards them? Obviously, we don't want a win encore in Chelsea, but I guess there are some other projects in Everett that seem very good and feels like some of them are missed opportunities for Chelsea.
Yeah, so I think from our vantage point, there are, so to answer your first question, we regularly will comparatively assess, you know, our local policy regimes versus surrounding municipalities and best practices across the country. I think there are three, yeah, I would say three factors related to development in Everett that have prompted the development that you see around Stop &amp; Shop and those areas. You know, one is that they do have an administration that is, you know, essentially willing to receive feedback from developers and immediately change zoning in order to accommodate those developers. The downside to that is, you know, like Chelsea, rents are rising, folks are being displaced, small businesses no longer can afford to operate, so it hasn't been done with a lot of sort of community-driven processes. I think the second kind of anomaly with that section of Everett is that a lot of those properties that are being redeveloped are larger properties, whereas on Chelsea's side, including in that district, there's a combination of sort of smaller properties that are owned by different owners that need to be assembled all into one in order to redevelop them or major infrastructural issues that are impeding development. I think the third is somewhat of a, you know, a truism for the entire region where some market interests have been placed ahead of community interest and not properly balanced. But communities like Everett, communities like Revere, really rolled back land use regulations and, you know, welcomed the development community and kind of at the start of the last market cycle. So what we're seeing right now is the byproduct of that where there's a lot of development taking shape. Right now, you know, if you look at the pipeline in Everett, there's very little being proposed just because of where we're at in the market and because of the rise in interest rates. So I think some of it was about, yeah, their approach to regulations, their approach to community planning, and then just simple timing where, you know, they caught the market on the upswing and had the property that was in the right condition in order to prompt development at that time.
I think it's also, one can't forget Chelsea's, it's tiny little city, and Everett and Revere are both geographically bigger, so there is more opportunity for development than there is here, given how small we are and how built up things are already.
Yeah, and I think there are, you know, different views in those communities around, you know, priority development sites. A lot of the land that is in Everett and Revere that's being developed into residential was formerly industrial property. You know, in Chelsea, we don't want sort of derelict, dilapidated industrial property, but we are aiming to, you know, revitalize our industrial base by producing new manufacturing and light industrial complexes that can employ residents, whereas the rest of the region is converting a lot of that to residential. So I think those are where you start seeing, you know, differences in land use goals that alter, you know, the outcome, meaning... alter, you know, the outcome, meaning Revere and Everett are experiencing the larger-scale residential development, whereas, you know, we're overseeing a, a slate of larger commercial industrial projects right now.
Yeah. I guess like, is there anything else that we could do to be more pro-development and kind of attract more money, I guess, through Chelsea? Or do you think we are on the right path?
Um, yeah, I certainly think we need to be marketing the city more vocally, both marketing the city in terms of business attraction to, you know, attract the types of businesses that we want to put down roots here and employ residents in durable industries that pay high wages. And then we also want to take a look at sort of the regulations that we do have in place. Some of them made sense at the time that they were adopted, but markets change, communities evolve, and needs are, are, you know, always being, being changed as well. So the, I wouldn't say we're doing everything we, we can right now. I think what we're seeing in Chelsea is that there's been a lot of community-driven work and community goals as a result of that. The next kind of critical step will be to take those community goals, balance it with kind of the realities of the market, and then achieve tangible, tangible objectives from it.
Yeah, I mean, I just like, I've been drawing around East Boston. I know it's, it's Boston, and there's construction repurposing happening on every single block. And I think some of it is, maybe they just, a lot of builders and developers probably deem it more business-friendly, and it's easier to get things passed. I know it's East Boston, and it's a huge piece of land, but I don't know, just driving, like, that's what I notice.
Absolutely. And, you know, there are, are costs when it comes to, you know, any development process. So the longer that a petitioner has to stay before a board, the more costs they're accruing. The more expensive land is, the less feasible it is that you'll see, you know, larger projects come to, to fruition.
For sure.
So there definitely is a balance between kind of the powers that a municipality has to attract development and incentivize it, along with different regulatory approaches that we could be taking to incentivize the, the type of development that, you know, is aligned with those community goals.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of people that are my age, like I'm 30, 31 right now, and they're trying to buy their first property. And you have one-bedroom apartments or condos in East Boston go for $600,000. If you go over the bridge to Chelsea, you're looking at maybe $400,000 or $450,000. So these are people who want to buy homes, plant their roots down in Chelsea, and I think it's definitely an opportunity that we can hopefully take advantage of.
Absolutely. And I think, you know, we want to be seen regionally as a place that is, you know, a place people want to do business in, a place that's predictable, reasonable. You know, I think from the feedback we hear from the development community, folks have no issues with, you know, making concessions or providing, you know, community amenities and public improvements, as long as they're, they're predictable and known from the outset. So I think there's a lot that can be done through community planning, zoning, to, to accomplish some of those goals. So do folks have any other questions on either the, the work that we're overseeing or, you know, potential opportunities for collaboration between the board and the department?
I like the checklist idea. I think that'll be really helpful for us to have some guidance and just to really understand the city's priorities, too. So.
Yeah, that, I think that would be enormously helpful to us as we're reviewing applications. I think it would also help to lend to that consistency, you know, for the developers and any applicant coming in, you know, that, you know, we are working with some very tangible guidelines.
Absolutely. So what I can do after this meeting is I'll confer with John and our team and devise kind of a scope that could be feasible, and then most likely we'll end up pursuing that funding opportunity that I mentioned through the state. The deadline's at the end of May. So if we do secure funding, that would allow us to proceed with that effort likely by mid-fall of this year. So not an instantaneous timeline, but, you know, something that we could accomplish next fiscal year.
When the master planning effort gets underway, I would hope that we could be part of that process, if, if there is an opportunity for that.
Absolutely.
I've attended certain master planning efforts that were kind of a open-house format, where you put, you know, stickers on, you know, it could be a sort of simple format that other members of the community can participate in, but, you know, it would just be nice to have our, a chance to weigh in on what the big-picture planning is.
Absolutely. I completely agree. So right now, we're embarking on a, a community planning process, but we're not yet going, we're not yet implementing a master planning process. So, you know, the next administration that comes into Chelsea will have the opportunity to embark on a, a master plan process in conjunction with residents, the planning board, the zoning board, and other community stakeholders. But absolutely, it's an opportunity that would be both beneficial for the community as well as a, a great opportunity to work together on.
That was going to be my question, my next question, is what do you think is the likelihood of a master planning process to be undertook and, and how soon? But I guess you think it's totally up to depending on who gets selected as city manager and who the next city council is and stuff?
Yeah, it's going to be, as you mentioned, the, the next city manager and what ends up happening this November with, with council elections. And that's the balance with, with planning. You know, it's, politicians like tangible results. You know, they like the ribbon cutting, the physical, you know, output. Planning kind of sets the stage for all of that. It just occurs over a longer time horizon. So, you know, we, we look forward to engaging with all of the counselors around the benefits of a, a master planning process.
This might be a, a bit of a tangent, but does, does Chelsea or neighboring communities do anything to measure and track displacement?
That's a good question. So we do. And there are some official and unofficial indicators that we follow. So we collect data on a weekly basis from the court system pertaining to eviction filings and the outcome of those eviction cases, as well as data on household mobility, so where people lived one year ago, including whether it was in the city, in the county, or in the greater region. Unofficially, you know, we're able to track it through the homelessness prevention and housing stability initiatives that the department oversees. So we operate about a $5 million homelessness prevention and housing stability program that operates emergency shelter, provides case management services, and just helps residents regain their foothold following an eviction or a foreclosure. So we see a lot of, you know, households that, you know, are working families that are coming into that program as a result of one-time rent increases or an accident that took them out of work for, for a few months. So we do have some data. It's not as granular as, as we'd like, but we are able to monitor broad-level trends from it.
And what about, is it comparable with other cities? Like, are you able to see how Chelsea is doing compared to other cities?
Yeah, so right now, you know, rents are rising at a faster rate in Chelsea than some of the surrounding communities. So for instance, rents for a one-bedroom, year over year, went up about 20%. That's comparatively higher, about, you know, seven percentage points higher than the city of Boston. However, there are other gateway cities that are experiencing similar upward swings. So Lynn is a good example of that, where there's been a lot of, you know, new housing activity in that, that particular marketplace. So, yeah, we're not an outlier by a, a long shot, but there certainly are, you know, pressures that are, are evident in the data.
Alex, can we follow up with you in an email if we have further thoughts?
Absolutely. So we put our contact information on the, the last slide here with our email and phone numbers. Definitely, please feel free to reach out, either if you have questions or if any specific projects are of interest. We can also plan on providing the board with an update after we submit this grant proposal, once we have a definitive timeline on that, that particular project.
I just remind you that, I just remind the board that when you email, do not email as a group, because you are under open meeting law requirements.
My only other suggestion slash request is that maybe if someone from the department can attend to comment on, on the proposals that are in front of us and, you know, maybe reference these neighborhood plans or other guidance that already exist, you know, because it'll probably be many months before we have some guidance in front of us.
Do you have a department memo of that nonsense that includes?
Either whether it's the department memo, someone coming to speak at the microphone, it doesn't really matter. Yeah.
Isn't, isn't Carl essentially the city's representative?
Sorry?
Isn't, isn't Carl essentially the city's representative that comes to like almost all of our?
Yeah, maybe. I, I don't know. I think it's, yeah.
Yeah, so he's one of our staff that oversees economic development initiatives, but he generally won't comment on non-economic development projects. So we're certainly happy to confer with John to figure out, you know, a, a method of, you know, reflecting those priorities in the neighborhood and community plans and identifying petitioners that, that are aligning with those.
I do that now when I'm writing up these reports. I do confer with, it's Carl, I do confer with Carl relative to any economic development issues, and I get comments from him.
Okay. This has been very helpful. Thank you.
No, thank you. We're always happy to, yeah, participate. And again, if you have any other comments, suggestions, questions after this, please feel free to reach out to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.